Good evening and welcome to the March 14th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else in the audience also recording? Seeing none, can we stand to salute flag? Let me just pull up the script.
We have one right here if you need it.
Oh, actually.
Yeah, just at the top.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, that's a German script. I was looking for the, uh... This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being operated as a hybrid forum under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. The public can join the meeting remotely and by telephone at 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861. All the information provided in the packets tonight is available on the town website. All supporting... The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Tristan Liberty Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Please allow me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are participating remotely or present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter is participating remotely. Mr. Runn?
Yes.
Town officials are here in the front row. And please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a rule called "vote." Sorry, I'm out of breath. I ran up the stairs. All right. First item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees. And with that, I will turn it over to you to open your meeting.
Great, and I'm Mary Dee Corsi. I'm the Chair of Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative that you are present, either virtually or present. Matt Toth?
Present.
Yeah. Suzette Dowd could not make it tonight. Jennifer Shea? Erica Briesaker?
Here.
John Danilowicz?
Present.
Did I say it correctly? Excellent, we're all, we're present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the purpose of meeting with the Library Trustees and holding this joint meeting today is the Board had received a request to name the addition at the Auburn Town Library after Dr. Martha Pappas. At the suggestion of other Board members, we wanted to include the Board of Library Trustees in discussing that name and naming the building since, you know, we know how much you guys obviously care about the library. So with that, I don't know if I want to turn it over to you guys. Do you have?
So I would turn it over to Matt Toth and then Suzette Dowd gave me five names that she would like me to read when he's, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, great. And this is from her, not from me, but it's important.
First of all, I am really thankful for the respect given to the Board of Trustees by invitation by our thoughts, the naming of the addition is a lie. I am not going... A month ago, I would have wanted to get into the controversy between the town administration and the library administration, but that is really unnecessary. So just having thought about us in this process was really something that was important for all of us. I know that. But I, in terms of ideas about the naming, my first impulse was without question to name this new addition after Arthur Pappas and Dr. Martha Pappas. And I, there's no question about the extraordinary commitment that these people have made, both of these residents have made for this entire community. I, you know, and I think the community has responded to their generosity, both through naming of places at the high school and also at that incredible magnificent recreation project. I would just like to offer that, that naming the new addition after the Pappas is certainly one very positive alternative. And I, I would also like to add, this one group of people, and this is very uncomfortable to me, but I don't, I don't care because I think of all the people who've gone before me, the hundreds of trustees for the library, and I would want at least some consideration of that addition to be called trustees addition. I think of people like Frank Cassidy, Tom Lawler, Marsha Ree, Kevin Flynn, Phil Parker, Bobby Baker, Bill Flaherty, Flannery, I mean, and Nan Johnson, people who would have put in usually 150 years' worth of commitment to the library. So I, I, that's an alternative that I would like at least consider. Not, I'm not looking at the current trustees, but I'm looking at people who have in the past made the significant contribution. And it would be an opportunity to remind the community that the trustees are significant, that they are, that they add something. So I, I, those are the possibilities that I'd like to offer. I really am just thankful that you've asked us to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Do you have the?
Yes, I have. Suzette Dowd gave me five names that she would like me to share. I'll say them in advance and then I'll talk about her reasoning behind it. One was Matt Toth. One is Jean Collins. One is Elizabeth Johnson, Martha and Arthur Pappas, and then Nan Johnson. And she says, the naming of the sunroom, in order to prepare for it, Suzette met with Julie Jacobson and really wanted to talk about just focusing on the big picture of the whole Auburn community. As a resident, she felt that residents should have a vote in this process, and this is her voice. I'm just, you know, being supportive to share it. She said, "Matt Toth served the Town of Auburn from 1978 to present, dedicated hundreds of hours on the BOT for 15 years, solely responsible for getting the Friends of Auburn Library tax deductible status, enabled the generous philanthropist resident of Auburn to make substantial donations to the library in a 501(c)(3) status, leadership of the BOT for 15 years, actively supported the BOT intellectually. He's brilliant, in my opinion. He's enhanced the lives of Auburn residents by improving the APL. He's an avid supporter and advocate of the APL. He's served on the school committee from 1978 to 1981. He's dedicated hundreds of hours researching the salary of the library director. Town, he's been a town meeting member, he was a town meeting, sorry, for 10 years. The Board of Trustees researched for the Friends of Auburn Library. He spent hundreds of hours and he was taken off, when, when the Friends of Auburn Library was taken off the rolls, we lost our 501(c)(3) status, but he was the person who really problem solved to put that back together." The second, the second person is Jean Collins, who served the Town of Auburn, made significant, significant changes to the Auburn Public Library. She's improved the facility, she works hard, she runs excellent programs. Elizabeth Johnson served the residents of Auburn from 1972 to 1918, excuse me, served the Town of Auburn from 1973 to 2018, dedicated her life to Auburn. She was a teacher in Auburn Public Schools, of the Fine Arts Department Chair. She was the founder of the Early Act Theater Club for K through 12 students. She also nominates Martha and Arthur Pappas, the most generous philanthropists in Auburn. They are people who seek to promote the welfare of others, especially by the generous donations of money to great causes. They donated funds to improve the library facility. Nan Johnson served the Town of Auburn for 60-plus years, dedicated 30 years to the APL on the BOT, retired her position last spring. Nan has always been a voice of reason. She doesn't have a mean bone in her body. Improved, she's improved the entrance of the library with gardens for many, many years. She's an avid library supporter and advocate. She taught reading, writing to Auburn students for, for 30 years. She's a serious advocate and promoter of the Town of Auburn. Her license plate says Auburn. And then she just, she, she finishes with saying, "This process of naming could be, one, put on a ballot, two, let it be an item for town meeting, number three, we need more, a more deliberative process." She says, "Her opinion is, I believe there are more qualified nominations, and why don't we wait to name the sunroom until it's built and ask the public to be heard on this matter?" Thank you.
So I just want to clarify that the process that the Board follows for naming any public building is to solicit input and nominations. And when the Board receives a nomination, which we did, we hold a public hearing based on that one nomination. So if any other names are nominated, we'll have another public hearing based on that name and then before any decisions are made. But that's the, the public process. And the public hearing that's scheduled for after this joint meeting is that where we try to solicit input from the public and really get the notice and intent of anyone in town that wants to, wants to talk about the person that was proposed or any other names. With that, are there any other comments?
Any other?
Maybe just to some perspective, kind of from two viewpoints. So, so one is having, you know, moved around the world and gone to a bunch of our different diplomatic posts where rooms, buildings, et cetera, have been named for individuals. There's obviously a tendency to focus on something immediate, somebody who makes an immediate contribution, something that happens. The question is, you know, what endures for time? And I, I bring this up because I had the opportunity, thanks to Jean, to visit the library, get a tour the other day, and I walked through the Merriam room. I don't know if anyone here knows who Merriam is or why a room is named after him, her, or them at the library. But again, to me, it was a reminder that this is not only a process that should go through this deliberation, but then it should have some meaning over time. So whatever the decision that the Board ultimately makes, I think how we communicate that, whether a plaque, a story, something to ensure that it's more than just a name that goes on a wall, but there's something that's behind it. The second thing is just to, you know, perhaps, you know, separate the issue of financial support, which is obviously critically important, from the act of naming itself. And to me, there's nothing that precludes doing both. So if in fact, due to deliberation, the decision is that there's a different name which would achieve a purpose for the, for the Board, that doesn't preclude being able to recognize the generous financial donation of the Pappas family. That's all I would add, this is a perspective. Thanks.
Thank you.
Board members have anything that they'd like to add? I'd seen that. So I would say that going into our public hearing afterwards, if it's the intent of any members of the Board of Library Trustees to add another nomination, we may want to continue the public hearing. That's again, something to talk about when we're in the public hearing, but to pull off on any votes, I just want to make everyone think of that. If we get another nomination, we'll need to schedule another public hearing. So just want that on everyone's mind. With that, if there's nothing else to add, nothing from Matt, can close the public hearing? Or not the public hearing, excuse me, the joint meeting?
The joint meeting.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. It's been made and seconded by a rule called "vote." Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Runn?
Yes.
Excuse me if I... Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Danilowicz?
Yes.
Mrs. Briesaker? And Chair, uh, good person. All right. And the Chair votes yes. So we are, thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please feel free to stay around for the public hearings.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right, moving on, under public comments, we have none. And public hearings and presentations, we have the 6:45, 6:47, so we can open it. Hearing on the proposed naming of the new Auburn Public Library Sunroom addition, Dr. Martha, Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas room. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So move. Second.
A rule called "vote." Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Runn?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So as you all know, we received a nomination from Library Director Jean Collins to name the Sunroom addition after Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas. This is the, in accordance with the Board's policies, whenever a building or room owned by the town is up for being named in recognition of someone, the Board's policy is to hold a public hearing after receiving nominations on that person. I don't know if there's anything in the town administration wants to add.
Thank you, through the Chair. Just to reiterate for those who may not have seen it, but a letter was submitted in accordance with the policy, which outlined the, primarily the financial contributions. And I know a comment was made about the financial contributions and certainly all the names that have been mentioned have made contributions in various manners. They're all great people. The recommendation had been made because without the funding that the Pappas Foundation had donated, we wouldn't have been able to put the sunroom on. We received a total initially of $505,000 for the project. And then when we realized, and that, excuse me to back up, that included the library, the pedestrian bridge, and the Gaudy Park project. So that was about 50% of it. We continued to secure other grant funds and earmarks to do that project because unfortunately, as we all know, costs are going up on everything. So the longer the project goes on, the more the costs are going up. What we found out when we started to work with the architect to actually start to do the design for the addition, as well as the design for the bridge, that the new addition triggered the building code to put in a sprinkler system in the entire library. So that cost is about $250,000 if we can get it at that price. So we did secure some grant funding, around $100,000, and we were short $150,000. So we went back to the Pappas Foundation and asked for another $150,000, which was granted. We actually asked for 140. We were calling it pretty close on the numbers and the foundation generously gave us 150 to make sure we could get the sprinkler system in. So all told, from the Pappas Foundation toward the, the library, pedestrian bridge, Gaudy Park project, which is all one project, but the library addition itself is included in that, there was $655,000 that was given to the town in a donation. In addition, Mrs. Pappas personally provided a donation of $50,000 to the Friends of the Library, to, it was what you call a directed donation, because she wanted the money to go toward furnishings for the new addition, as well as some additional furnishings that we may need to get for the children's room. We were able to finally expand that. So I just wanted to reiterate why that, that nomination came in. We support it, and myself have worked a lot with the foundation over the last year and a half. They've been tremendous to work with. And, you know, we believe that we wouldn't have had that addition. We've had so many people that have come through the library, so many dedicated residents and Board members and staff, but we were looking at it from the perspective of, would we have been able to have an addition on the library? And there's been no funding source to provide for that, at least since I've been here, if there hasn't been. So I did, I did want to add that. I just want to thank the Board, and, excuse me, thank the Foundation Board for all their support because it was really an incredible process. We had to provide a lot of information to them. They really wanted to make sure that this project was integrated. They wouldn't just fund the library, they wouldn't just fund the park, they wouldn't just fund the bridge. It was the integrated approach to the whole and making sure that all of those pieces were put together. And it's really going to be an incredible project as it moves forward. And just to give you just a quick update, we are, we did sign the contracts with the two architect firms to start on the design, and the design is needed to be done for us to be able to go out to bid on the project. So we are moving on it. We're trying to keep our eye on the costs. We have some concerns as the economy continues to go the way it is, that these costs are going to continue to go up. But we've been thankfully lucky to be able to so far cover it, and it is through the generous donation of, of the foundation along with some state grant dollars. So thank you very much.
Comments or questions for Board members? Mr. President?
So listening to everybody, and I think the, the Library Board has some really good points. I think that I'm nowhere near close to deciding on what we should do as far as naming the sunroom for the library. I think that, you know, a lot of us do volunteering. I think the Pappas is, you know, it goes without saying, are incredible donors to this town and, but I don't think they're expecting to have their name put on, on everything that they, they fund. And I think that certainly they're going to be recognized and certainly there's going to be, I, I would want something in that room to, to recognize the Pappas. What I would like to see is, I think there's, there's a lot of different ways that you can go about it, and I think the Board member, I'm not even trying to kill your name, sorry, but he brought up a good point, that there's many different options to, to recognize. I mean, there could be a new, you know, wall of fame within that sunroom. There could be, you know, the, the sunroom, I think, is going out to a, a bridge walkway. There can be, you know, a granite stone that, that memorializes people that were former trustees that, you know, you can have, you know, signs all, all over the library for different, different names. I would like to see, you know, maybe a committee set up that can explore, you know, the entire project, you know, the walkway, the sunroom, and, and say, okay, well, this is how we can best thank past trustees. This is how we can thank people that have given, you know, countless hours to, to the library, countless hours in Mrs. Johnson's respect that, you know, to, to youth in general. There's so many different people in town that should be recognized. And I think that it's, it's amazing what the Pappas do. I wish I had the ability to do the same thing. I would do the same thing, and I think there's a lot of people in town that would do the same thing. So I'm not trying to minimize what, what they've done at all. They, you know, they, they could go other places and do other things with their money, and they're so generous to this town, and I totally appreciate that. But I think that, you know, again, it, sometimes you name things after people because of the here and now. They, they really made this, this project happen. You know, Bay Path just put in a whole new addition, you know, whoever maybe contributed the most to that, you'll want to name it after them. But it's not necessarily the way to do things. I, I think that, that there's, there's some, wasn't, some incredible names that were read off in, in the nominations. I would like to know more about those people. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't think there should be a vote tonight to, to name the sunroom. I think there's, there's a whole project going on. I think that, that there can be many different dedications to, to all aspects of the library, the, like I say, the walkway, the bridgeway, you know, the pathway, whatever. There's, there's so many different things that can happen. I'd like to see a subcommittee put together that's, that's going to come up with some ideas of, you know, here's all the different ways that we can recognize a lot of people that have given their time and their, their knowledge to this town.
I just want to point out that while you were, you were talking, I thought of the Fur Friends are handling a lot of the donations that they receive, and they're putting bricks in that'll eventually go up with the names of people who've contributed. So if we're building a walkway, that could be something that we think of as well. I don't know where we are in the design process that I'm trying to do.
Just starting.
Okay. So like I said, we could have a committee or something to establish, you know, people's names on a walk path or something like that to recognize the numerous people that have contributed to the library over the years. That was just a thought I had while you were talking. Is there anything else from other Board members? Yes, right.
Well, first off, I didn't know Mr. Toth had from '78 to present. That's pretty wild. That's, that's pretty great. Everyone else on this list, including Mr. Toth, but, these are incredible people. I mean, what was my mother? How am I going to, you know, say anything against that? So I, I see where people, I see where we're coming from with this. At the same time though, I mean, the Pappas have done so much in town over the years. And I mean, I've, I've watched them. I mean, it wasn't just my mother that really, you know, what she did in town inspired me to, to get involved. I watched them. I have for a, for a number of years. And maybe not the most popular thing to say, but $650,000, this project doesn't happen without them. So if we were to move forward with a vote tonight, I would vote in support of that.
Any other comments or questions from Board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carpenter?
I agree with Mr. Burrisum, and I certainly want to include the Library Trustees in anything going forward with, with naming something. And, and as people know, I, I'm not a fan of naming anything after anybody. Not because people don't deserve it, but because these structures and places belong to the people of the Town of Auburn. They don't belong to any one person. So, you know, to me, I think we, we're very early in this process. I thank, you know, Mrs. Collins or Dr. Collins for, you know, kickstarting this process, but I think we're a little premature in, in starting a discussion about naming it for anybody. But I agree with Mr. Burrisum, and I would support, you know, creating a subcommittee and asking the Library Trustees to serve on that subcommittee to try and bridge the gap here and come up with some little ground.
To clarify, Mr. Bretham, were you suggesting a subcommittee to name the sunroom or?
No.
Look at ways to honor other?
A, a subcommittee to come up with ideas of looking at the, the entire project because there's a, there's a sunroom, there's, there's, you know, the, going to be the, the park behind the fire station, there's going to be a bridge over the water, a walkway, there's already, you know, pathways, like you said, maybe, maybe bricks, maybe, you know, I know Bay Path years ago put up a, a nice granite stone, almost like a, a headstone, large headstone, and it, it honors anybody that was lost while it's, you know, in school. If, if a student passed or a teacher passed while teaching. My father happened to be on the school committee when he passed. He was an active member of the school committee and they, they included him on that. I thought that was a very nice touch. It's a, it's a headstone that, that sits out by the entryway of the, as you drive up. So, you know, I think there's a lot of different things that can be done, and I think that it would be good for a subcommittee to kind of explore all those things and say, hey, you know, maybe, maybe we should take a lot of these past trustees' names that, that have done this and make a little wall of fame with, and I use the word "wall of fame," but, you know, "wall of appreciation" is probably a better word for it. You know, and, and like I say, I, I'm just hearing for the first time some of the accomplishments that Mr. Toth and, and some of the others have made. And I think that subcommittee would, would hear some of those things and say, you know what, you know, maybe we should recognize this person and, and we can do it in this way, or, you know, we have 20 people that we should recognize and, and this is the best way to accomplish that. So I don't think we should have a subcommittee to, to nominate a per, one person. I think we should have a subcommittee to come up with ideas for the best way for us to thank those people.
Maybe look at the policy as a whole.
Um, yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, through the chair, I was just thinking, based on, based on some of the comments, I'm just thinking, the board may want to take a look at your naming policy. I know it's been brought up in the past, that the board had developed a policy, but it was rather vague in certain areas. It's, it's very, it was a very simple, simple policy, but you might want to look at your policy and maybe amend that policy to allow for a different type of process. Because right now, your policy allows for someone nominates, you hold a hearing, and then you make the decision. Maybe you want to amend that policy to provide for the board to set up a subcommittee to look at naming or acknowledging, make it, like you said, Lionel, make it broader, naming and acknowledging contributions of residents over the years to various either facilities or.
What I was thinking, sir, your suggestion wasn't to create the subcommittee to look at naming the building, right? Just to look at honoring people. So, I, I don't think it's necessarily, if we started a subcommittee, that it would necessarily be in conflict with what our policy is now. We could still continue the hearing. And we wouldn't have to make a decision tonight. We can obviously vote to continue the hearing to our next meeting. And I think we could establish a subcommittee or vote to establish a subcommittee tonight. Or I guess it wouldn't be a subcommittee. It would just be a committee to just even include people from outside of the board to look at ways to honor, and I was trying to write down quickly how that motion would sound, to honor people with regards to the project as a whole. So, I, I don't know if they're necessarily in conflict, but looking at the policy is something that we, yeah, might want to.
Yeah, you might want to just in the future, take a look at it. Because I know there's, I know in the past, and I think Mr. Carpenter raised it last time too, the policy, you may want to put some more detail to the policy moving forward, because as you said, there are going to be a lot more naming opportunities, at least through this one project alone. There's several. So, you might want to take a look at maybe making the policy a little bit more defined. But right now, it is what it is. That is your policy. I agree. It wouldn't be a conflict for, for you to have a subcommittee to look at other things. You could still go forward and talk about naming a property if you wanted to, or acknowledging in addition to that. It doesn't have to be exclusive.
Okay. Is there anything else from other board members right now? Oh, Mr. Carpenter? You unmuted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think we need to rush this. There's no timeline in our policy that we have to vote within a month. We have to hold a hearing within sixty days. I, you know, we've had some good ideas. Let's, let's, this project is barely begun, and we're already talking about naming something. You know, we don't need to rush this process. You know, we can certainly continue this hearing for several months and try and see what the subcommittee comes up with, see if we get any other, you know, right now, we have the library trustees sharing some ideas, but we still need a formal nominating process. They would need to, as residents, put those names into, into the process. So, you know, to me, I think, you know, there's no rush on this. We, we haven't even, really even begun the process of building the structure, and we're already talking about putting somebody's name on something. You know, however worthy it is, it's, you know, let's give it time. Let's spend some time with various people and try and come up with a good solution or a good answer before we, you know, jump the gun and, and make a vote one way or the other.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask everyone, because I just got a message from Dan that the audio is a little bit muddled. So, everyone may want to pull their mics closer, including myself, so I can go through it more clearly. I agree. I don't think we have to rush it tonight. That's why I think we can continue the hearing. But if we wanted to establish that subcommittee to look into other ways to honor people, I think we could take that step tonight, again, up to the board and what the board as a whole wants to do.
I would make a motion that we establish a subcommittee to take a look at the library and Drury Square project as a whole and come up with ideas of how we can memorialize or show our appreciation for many dedicated people and many generous people here in town.
A second.
Okay. So, that's the library and Drury Square project as a whole. So, that would include the Goddard Park. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to establish a committee. Was that a, I'm sorry, a subcommittee or a committee in general?
Uh, I would like to have, I would say, let's do a committee because I don't know if I can dictate the makeup. I really don't want them to dictate the makeup of it. But, you know, to, to include at least one member of the select board, at least one member of the, uh, library board of trustees, and maybe even go out and see if there's somebody that would like to volunteer from the public.
As a point of clarification, what we'll be doing with, with the matter at, I mean, this seems like a whole separate motion for a separate subcommittee. Will we be continuing this indefinitely or?
Does, yeah, I, I would suggest, it seems like the board doesn't want to take any action on the nomination tonight. So, I would suggest continuing the hearing either until our next meeting on the twenty-eighth or indefinitely. Yeah, it is the twenty-eighth, or indefinitely.
And sorry I had to step out. Would this subcommittee be to?
Not to come up with a name for the, no.
So, not to leave the building, just to find other ways to?
Other ways to honor those who would, yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or clarifications needed on the motion made? All right, seeing that, motion was made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, I think we would wait until our next meeting. Like Mr. Carpenter said, there's no rush to establish, you know, who's going to serve, who put one board member, and so on, unless there's a need or, or people want to actually fill that, that one slot from a board member tonight. I think otherwise, we can continue it to our next, to our next meeting. That sounds all right with everyone?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing until our meeting on May the twenty-third.
Second. Uh, March the twenty-third?
No, March, it would be March twenty-eighth. So, May the twenty-third, so you're going out till May? Yep, that's meeting. Okay.
I checked the calendar.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to continue the hearing until May twenty-third. By a roll call vote, Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, moving on, we have the continued hearing on ARPA. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to reopen the hearing.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Ruffley?
Yeah.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, as you all know, we held a public hearing, continued the public hearing to solicit public input on how to spend the ARPA funds that we received. One major suggestion was for $300,000 for the impact shifts for the fire department. Board members would remember, we've talked about this for a while now, ways to support the fire department, and the continued stress that they're under caused by the pandemic. So, that's one thing that we're going to discuss tonight, and I'll hand it over to the town manager to come into detail.
All right. Thank you very much. Through the chair, I'm going to hand out four of them here, just, and I'll go through them. So, those who don't have it, we just thought it'd be easier for you to follow along with some of the finances. Each one has two pages.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, as you know, this is a continued hearing. And just to kind of go over where our, what our ARPA funding is currently. So, the total funds that the town of Auburn will receive is $5,011,472. We've received 50% of that to date, with the remainder to be expected this fall of 2022. The, again, just a reminder, the funds need to be committed by December thirty-first, 2024, and expended by December thirty-first, 2026. To date, with the approval of the board of selectmen, we have committed to three projects in ARPA funds. A $60,000 granted to AYFS, Auburn Youth and Family Services, for the current fiscal year that we're in, based on a request they made. $25,000 for the fire rescue study to determine impacts of COVID on their operations and ongoing impacts and how we can address those in the future. And $75,000 for public health, various public health, including the kiosk, testing, and other public health related costs related to the pandemic. So, that's $160,000. So, this evening, during your continued hearing, we have three requests before you for your consideration. The first is a $300,000 request that we had raised previously for a third ambulance shift and supplies for that ambulance. $180,000, and there's a letter in your packet from AYFS, and I know Norm is here today from the youth commission to support this also, but there is a letter in your packet that came in from Sally Darkangelo, who's the executive director of AYFS, seeking $60,000 in each year FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five. And Camp Gleason, due to various cost overruns and unanticipated costs at Camp Gleason over the last three years, we are seeking additional funds, and all of this I can go through, in the amount of $115,500. So, tonight's request is $595,500. If you read down on the page, if tonight's request was approved, the total ARPA committed dollars at that point would be $755,500. That would leave a balance remaining to be committed again by December of 2024, of $4,255,972. In the past, we have talked about some priorities, and the chair had asked me to just raise those again this evening as part of this. And some of those priorities, they, they, I don't want to say they keep shifting, but as we've learned about new federal funding sources and potential state funding sources, we didn't want to come before you tonight and ask for specific sewer projects because there's still an opportunity. We might be able to get some dollars from other sources. So, before we use our ARPA dollars in an area that we could potentially augment it with other funding, but I would tell you that we're likely, if, if everything were to play out, we would probably want to come back and ask for about $2 million for sewer. And I couldn't tell you what exactly yet. We want to see what other things we get funded, but I can tell you some of the needs that we have. The needs we have for sewer, and Joanna Paquin's here, our DPW director, the needs we have for sewer could, could exceed $20 million. You know, there, it, it's an enormous need. So, we would have to look to prioritize certain needs. And that would likely be a couple that I wrote down here, culverts, stormwater, a generator, a pump station, a bypass hookup, and sewer force main. But we couldn't do that for $2 million. But $2 million would hopefully fund one or two of those critical projects, and maybe we can get some other funding through the IIAJA, which is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is a federal act. We just actually saw today, a grant program was just enrolled today that we could apply to for roadway projects. So, I think we're going to start seeing some programs folding out. So, we want to be careful to not commit the money until we know what else is out there. The other thing I want to raise is I have yet to see any additional programs being announced. It doesn't mean there won't be for age back improvements. And as we had explained to the board back in the fall, the age back replacements and upgrades for municipal buildings come to about 1.2 million. You know, they're older buildings. Some of the ones aren't that old, but unfortunately, they weren't built to withstand the, the physical pressures on some of those buildings. So, we have serious age back issues. We spend a lot of money on repairs every year. If we were to go through and completely overhaul, replace some, repair some, it would be 1.2 million. Again, that's if we do all of the municipal buildings. We may have other needs that come up. We may, you know, want to say, let's prioritize and do these three, and that's all we're going to get to. And then our ADA upgrades, again, this totally eligible, we have an ADA transition plan to identify where our public facilities need to have ADA upgrades and improvements. That includes our buildings, our parks, and other recreational facilities in town. I believe the total amount of H, uh, excuse me, of ADA upgrades that we need over time is, it, it probably exceeds $2 million. And again, that was three years ago. That was the cost. You know, today's cost, we can't even put a number on it right now. So, even if we put somewhere in the $400,000 range, it would give us a little bit to start working toward those ADA upgrades. So, that, if, if we were to do those, we'd be in around the 3.6 million, still leaving about $500,000. So, I, I think some other things that we have to keep in mind, we have requests for premium pay for eligible town employees. We may need additional, and I apologize, this is a, this is a typo on my fault here, on the Auburn Public Library. Again, we've got the funds identified for the sprinkler system. We're really excited about that. If we go out to bid and the cost comes back, and it exceeds the dollar amounts that we have, we're going to need to look for another source to augment that. And likewise, for Camp Gleason, which we will go through, the Camp Gleason project right now does not require a sprinkler system. That being said, while the building is open and under construction, it's far more cost effective to put one in now than it would be down the road if the code were to change it, if we would have to put in a sprinkler system. Again, those are two costs where we don't know what those costs are, and we're not 100% clear yet if ARPA would fund those. As late as this afternoon, I was on a, a call, a federal call on ARPA dollars, and regulations are still being promulgated. There's still new information coming out every day. So, we, we don't want to make some recommendations to you that may not be necessary and may change over the next coming months. But those are things I wanted to keep on the board's radar screen. So, with that being said, Mr. Chair, if, if you don't mind, I, I can just briefly go through the Camp Gleason and just quickly the library sprinkler system. And then, if anyone has questions, I know we have Joanna Paquin here as well, but I'll start with the easier one, which is the library sprinkler system. So, again, 250,000, we have $150,000 in the grant from the Papas Foundation. We have $50,000 from the overall budget for the library Goddard Park Bridge that we could dedicate to that. And we did receive a state EOPS, which is Public Safety earmark, for 50,000. So, that should give us the 250. Again, just keeping in mind, we're trying to keep our eyes out for something that may be able to fund any cost overruns, given the, the market right now. Camp Gleason, a little more complicated. Camp Gleason, the original appropriation at town meeting, I believe in 2018, was $200,000. And that was to renovate Camp Gleason with the main goal of providing new meeting space for us. As you know, this is the biggest room we have. Then we have some smaller rooms. We have the planning boardroom and the community room at the police department, occasionally something at the library. But we are really short on meeting space. So, we were able to get $200,000 out of cable retained earnings.
Okay.
Approved. So, that project started in FY twenty-one. And as you can see at the top of the page, the expenditures we made in FY twenty-one were $27,278. That was for various concrete, casella waste, certain tree removal, building materials. Then in FY twenty-two.
Sorry to interrupt. I just got a note that your audio is a little unclear. So, if you want to talk, so the mic.
Sorry, does that help?
We have the.
Is that better?
Don't know. Okay.
How does that work?
Dan, is that any better?
Dan, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, it just seems to be a reverb, just on your mic, Julie. I'm not.
Okay. That's because I probably keep turning my head to look at, to look at the chair. So, I, I won't turn and look at the board. I'll just, I'll just look down at my notes. So, thank you for telling me that. So, the expenditures in FY twenty-two were 54,000, a little bit over that. Again, we, we had issues that we didn't realize we were going to have until those walls were opened. We had no idea what would be behind them. We couldn't open them prior to the project starting because without the funding, we had to take our chances and, and go forward and do the project. And when we opened it up, there was some serious mold and asbestos in the building. So, that was very expensive, and some of the materials that we needed to do on top of the remediation of that cost extra dollars as well. We found some, some rot in some of the structural components of the building that had to be replaced. So, the good news is, it's, it's moving along. It looks great. We would love to have the board come and take a tour and have our town meeting members come in and see the building. But, so that's what we have spent to date. So, if you look here, without going through every single item, there are probably about ten or twelve categories that we still need to do to complete the project, which we would probably be able to complete by the end of this calendar year. Three of those expenditures are ARPA eligible. And that would be the insulation at thirty eight thousand, five hundred, the HVAC at forty four thousand, and the video equipment at thirty three thousand. And the reason for the video equipment obviously is because it would allow us to have remote or hybrid meetings in that room and bring public meetings and events and community events to the public through our cable television, which is, you know, ARPA is trying to reach all households. We're trying to make, uh, deal with what's happened in the pandemic. And as we found before that, we didn't have the equipment to do all of this. So it's really critical that we plan for emergency situations like that moving forward. So the ARPA eligible amounts, as you can see, come to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So the whole project right now, the budget with the contingency, we had to make sure we put that in there. It, the costs are literally going up as we speak. They're, they're going up on a regular basis. And we don't have any control over that. That, if we were able to put in a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred out of ARPA, that would leave eighty six thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars that we would be putting into a warrant article for the, for the annual town meeting for cable retained earnings to continue to fund that. So we, we were able to whittle that down to a small amount for cable retained earnings. Again, this would mean no tax levy dollars would go into this. This would come from cable revenues and this would come from ARPA dollars. So there is the budget on Camp Gleason. So I'm going to stop now and see if there's any questions on any of the three items. Point out that we have Deputy Chief Glenn Johnson here this evening to answer any questions that you may have on the ambulance, which I'm sure you'll have some questions on that, and to explain what it is you're looking for, Joanna Paquin to answer anything on Camp Gleason. And Norm is here for AYFS. So however, the Board would like to start.
Yep. Uh, procedural question, are we going to take each one of these individually or?
I think we can take them in one motion, I don't think there's any need to.
I'm going to recuse myself, just because I am a Board Member of Auburn Youth and Family Services. I don't have any financial interest as being a Board Member, but I, I think it's best I recuse myself in this.
Tristan, you may want to take them separately so he can connect.
Yeah, sorry. You don't believe, you say a part of the conversation, we're not even voting yet. You're not getting away that easy, listening. Are there any questions or comments from Board Members?
Awesome, I, I, my fault, I also wanted to just acknowledge and thank Lieutenant Justin Brigham for being here today too. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions, but I think he's here for support. Thank you.
I have a question. So all of these recommendations and requests, are these, I know the ARPA regulations are kind of ever changing. Are these falling squarely within what is right now?
That's a great question, yes. That's why we're coming before you tonight. It is very clear that the Auburn Youth and Family Services is an eligible activity. It services a so-called disproportionate population or disparate population. The services that they provide, the mental wellness, the counseling, the food bank, all of that is, is, has increased because of COVID. So that's clearly eligible. The ambulance is clearly eligible. The call volume is up and it, it is, I wouldn't say a hundred percent due to COVID, but it has enhanced the, you heard from the Deputy Chief before, it's enhanced the call volume because of COVID. And the problem is, they may not know, when the ambulance goes out, they won't know that it's a COVID case. So they have to take the extra precautions. The extra precautions are taking time on, on both the front end and the back end of those calls. And the supplies that they need for those as well. And, and I think Deputy Chief had talked about the just societal changes due to COVID. You, we're going to see this moving forward. A lot more people are working at home, a lot more people are, are in their homes as opposed to an office building. More people are nervous about health-related issues and calling nine one one for an ambulance, whereas maybe before they might have gone to a clinic. So we're seeing a lot of societal changes that are having a major impact on the ambulance. So that is clearly eligible. And the Camp Gleason, we only pulled out those components that were eligible. The HVAC, HVAC and insulation are part of the air quality. You need to have a HVAC system, you need to have insulation, especially following, you know, the removal of mold and asbestos. We have to really make sure that we have good air quality in a building that's going to be publicly used. And then the video equipment is clearly eligible as well.
Thank you.
Neil?
Yep. So I'm just going to take one, one of the time, as far as the third ambulance. I think anybody that's talked to our fire department or, or any local fire department knows that all of the fire departments are basically back against the wall right now. I mean, everybody is just so incredibly busy. And having the manpower and, and being able to put a third ambulance that I know will get used all the time. I certainly have no issues at all. I think that that's money well spent. Auburn Youth and Family Services, they're asking basically for sixty thousand dollars a year. You know, I think in, I mean, that's, that's what ARPA is here for. Youth and Family Services, you don't even have to say anything more about it. It's, I, I, I think that's a low number. And, but obviously this is a generous community and will also, as a community, continue to support Auburn Youth. But certainly, I, I wouldn't even blink an eye at sixty thousand dollars for, for the next few years. The Camp Gleason, you know, obviously it's a, it's not a historic building, or is it a historic building? I don't think it's technically a historic building. But it's certainly a building that from, from my childhood was used a, a lot by our town and by other groups for, for meetings. It's, it's a great hall. I can't wait to see it, I, I haven't seen it yet. But I, I have memories of, you know, adults having meetings upstairs while kids have, had meetings downstairs. So the, I, I, I don't have a problem with any of the spending. One question I do have on Camp Gleason is I see thirty three thousand on video equipment and fifty thousand on electrical. And are we getting state of the art video and audio and, and that type of thing? Because I'd hate to see that, that we're, you know, using today's technology if, and, and not, and not wiring for tomorrow's technology. So I, obviously we have to buy today's technology to use today. But, you know, going through computers over the last thirty years, we've used, you know, ten different types of, of cabling. And, you know, obviously fiber optic is probably the, the thing now. But whatever's, you know, going into, to the next phase, we, we should put that in. We should also put maybe conduits in or duct work, yeah, conduits in so that if we have to run new types of wires, you know, we're not throwing walls apart and that type of thing. So I just want to make sure that, that we're spending the right kind of money there. I, I, I see, Chris, I, I wouldn't mind you giving a couple of words on that.
Our plan all along was to put conduit in the building so that we can expand out as time goes by. So before all the walls are sealed up, we're going to just run conduit to every possible drop point. Also, the, the layout of the building, we're not using the basement for anything more than storage. So we can drop right down through the floor, run across the ceiling of the basement and then go up to any place we need. And as for the cameras, it'll be NDI technology, they're power over Ethernet. We have fiber in the building already. We have a fiber drop there right now. So, and from there, that runs to the Town Hall and we have a link from the Town Hall to the high school.
And as long as we have the Fire Department here, can you just give us a couple of words? Obviously you've been there along the way and as far as means of egress and even the driveway going in, I know it's a little bit of a, a windy driveway going in. Is, is everything, do you guys feel comfortable with everything that's going on there?
As of right now, we're very comfortable with what's going on at Camp Gleason. I know fire prevention is working closely with the Building Department to make sure everything's to spec.
Thank you.
Through the Chair, I should also point out that we've had several meetings at Camp Gleason. Jimmy's just doing a tremendous job as, as he does with all the projects that he touches. He just, he's talented. But we've had some meetings also with many of the people in this room. The Fire Department's been involved from the beginning, our Builder Commissioner, our DPW Director, our DDIS Director, who's also the Public Health. There are a lot of components to this that affect different departments that we're really trying to take a look at. I would tell you initially, we were hoping to put in more of a commercial kitchen. And there were two reasons for the commercial kitchen. It was to have the ability to have cooking classes on cable TV and at the same time maybe allow different programs to take place through the Recreation and Culture Department or the Senior Center. And it was also to be, to be able to give us the equipment that we needed, should we rent it in the future, to bring in some additional rental revenues. What happened because of the requirements of a commercial kitchen, the public health requirements and the code requirements, the cost of the kitchen was about a hundred thousand dollars. And we just felt we couldn't justify it. So we cut that out of the budget. So what you see in here now is a kitchenette. So just your very basic, a countertop, probably a refrigerator, because first of all, if you're going to be using it for town functions, there is no other place there, there's no other place to keep food cold. You have to do that for cabling purposes. And potentially the requirement on the sinks, the Public Health Board of Health requirement for certain types of sinks. But we really cut that back to just be a kitchenette to just serve the meetings. We're not going to be doing any type of commercial kitchen or cooking shows or anything like that. We feel that that was an unnecessary expenditure, it would have been nice, but not at that cost. So we're looking to other options for doing that in other facilities, but we just didn't feel that it was appropriate to put the money in there. So what you see here is as bare as we could get and still keeping within the, the mission of the cable revenues, which was to create a meeting space that we could use for televised meetings, which ties right in with COVID, just being able to televise any type of event, public function in there that we don't currently have the means to do. So we have cut some things out of it. Where we couldn't cut, we did build in a, what's remaining, we've built in a ten percent contingency, hoping that, you know, over the next couple of months, we'll, we'll be within. I, I think there's a little cushion on a couple of these, just in case the price goes up. Again, it's just been changing so rapidly. But the, the, I'll just give you an example, the hood for the commercial kitchen by itself was seventy five thousand dollars. Just for, excuse me, I take that back, it was seventy five to, it was about forty to forty five thousand dollars for a hood. And the types of commercial equipment that you need. So it will be built out nicely, it will be a great function room, it will be a great meeting room, but it's not going to be over the top as far as equipment. We, we have to be reasonable.
As a follow-up, are we using BayPath for any parts of this?
No, we're using our own DPW.
Just DPW is doing everything?
DPW is doing everything, but you have to contract out the electrical and the plumbing to license.
And can BayPath take any part of those?
We could check into that. I, I'm only hesitant because we, usually we work, we have special town employees through the School Department. So we actually have on staff electrical and plumbing who work for the School Department as well as us. So they're already employees. So most of this is for equipment. There is some labor involved in there, but a lot of this is for the supplies, the actual electrical supplies and equipment.
Yeah, I just, I just feel that anytime our town does something, you know, we, we should look into, at least explore utilizing BayPath. You know, there, there's some pretty talented people out there and the instructors are amazing out there. Most of them are licensed in their field. So, you know, it, it, it may be too late for this, but, but certainly other things that go on. I think, I think sometimes we lose sight that BayPath is, is part of our, our district. And, and, you know, we, we may have students in the electrical plumbing fields and, and that type of thing. And we should try to utilize them as much as we can. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from Board Members?
Mr. Chairman, just one question?
Sure.
So I, I certainly don't have a quarrel with any of the recommendations. I just have one question on the third ambulance. This will be filled by volunteer? The employees will be volunteering for the shifts, there won't be an order on situation, is that correct?
I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief.
Through the Chair, to Mr. Carpenter, yes. This will be overtime for the current firefighters, but there will be no order ons for the shift.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from Board Members? Or anything from the public since it's public hearing? See, I actually had one question, it may be directed at Tom Zedalis, and I see you on here. So one of the questions that we had gotten from a resident was about building a, a kitchen or using ARPA funds to have a state of the art kitchen where we could create food for, just make food for events around the town. And it sounds like that would have cost a lot of money if we had put it in at Camp Gleason. Is it possible to use ARPA funds for a larger kitchenette at Camp Gleason? Or would that fall out of the guidelines?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can you hear me?
Yep.
If it was used for the purpose of, of eating, you know, the disproportionate population case could be named, but it would have to be specifically for that purpose?
Okay.
So.
Not a mixed use, do you think?
It would.
Sorry, go ahead.
It, it would somewhat run parallel to the endeavor that you're doing, you know, granted not to the scale at Auburn Youth and Family Services, although they don't cook the meals. So they just, you know, prepackaged food. All the safe haven would be if it was more such as a, a, a community kitchen, that would, that would be a safe ARPA rule?
If it was a community kitchen, would that be a mixed use? So you, you could use it for, I guess, recreational events and sell food along with using it for a, a charity like Auburn Youth? Or would it have to be specifically solely for Auburn Youth or another like-minded charity?
The, the underlying purpose would have to be the the preparation of, of food to be distributed.
Sorry, Tom, could you, could you repeat yourself? You, you cut out a little bit there.
No, I just, no, no parameters.
Sorry, Tom, could you just say what, what you just said again?
The underlying purpose was. Okay, let me try it one more time, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Sorry about that.
If, if the underlying purpose would be to construct the kitchen for, you know, distributing food for disparate populations, you could make a case that a kitchen could be an eligible expense?
Okay. All right, thank you. I was just curious because it was one of the questions raised by a resident when we had the public hearing a couple of months ago now. So I wanted to ask it while, while it was coming up. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And just to add to that, I think we, because we had looked at it, I think our concern, Ed, Tom and myself too, was to have a kitchen that was potentially for commercial uses. That's why we wouldn't have even put in a kitchenette under ARPA funds here because there's a potential to use it to service the town, the town, a town meeting at any kind of Boarder Commission. And that wouldn't be considered a disparate population unless they were specifically focused on addressing that population. So we just thought it was too questionable for even a small kitchenette.
Thank you. Well, if there are no, oh, yes, sure.
Home flash from the Auburn Youth Commission. And I just, you know, I appreciate your support and everything and I know there's no questions. You've got the letter from AYFS and if you have any contact with that organization at all. if you have any contact with that organization at all, you know how much they reach out to this community and help the truly needed. And the services they're providing are growing because of COVID. So I just wanted to come from the Auburn Youth Commission and thank you for taking consideration for this. Um, I know the money helps, it goes a long way. You know, with COVID, uh, they didn't really have a way to do fundraising and stuff. So this is money that's really gonna go a long way. And, uh, it'll help, continue to help for the, the next few years I'll be on this too, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, um, I'll entertain a motion to want to do this, uh, each individually so that Mr. Wren can vote on, um, the other two motions. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to expend three hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds for the third ambulance impact shifts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second by a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly.
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Auburn Youth and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second by a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly.
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Recused.
And the chair votes yes, for one extension. And that's one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for Camp Gleason insulation, HVAC and video equipment.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen five hundred.
Yeah, one hundred and fifteen thousand five.
Five hundred, yeah, one thousand one fifty, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing. I'm sorry, did you want to?
No, I just, I want to thank you, uh, very much for that. We, we have not received any additional information or any additional requests from the public. So, uh, you could, you could continue the hearing and we can come back and keep you informed on all the other potential funding sources that we hope are gonna come to fruition soon. Thank you for your support.
Is there a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Just a question or point of order, we need a date to continue it too, Mr. Chairman.
I don't want you to have a date.
When did we have it continued to before?
I mean, you could, you could choose a date and if we have new information, we can bring it in at that point. If not, you could continue it again.
Yes, we'll have it sent to May twenty-third. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing until May twenty-third, twenty-two.
I, I don't, um, I, I think we should not put a date on it. Uh, if the town comes back and has something at the next meeting, I, I don't wanna continue it, uh, you know, beyond, I'm not even gonna be here on May twenty-third, I'll be gone by then. And, and not that I have to be involved, but, but if the town manager or, uh, anybody has something to bring to this board, I think it should be continued meeting by meeting by meeting. Um, it's an ongoing thing with ARPA. So, um, I would, I would make a motion to, uh, continue the hearing to our next meeting date.
March, okay. Motion, so, uh, I'm sorry, who had made the original motion? Was that?
I did.
You, so you'll amend the motion, okay. Um, all right, so by a roll call vote, so this is to continue the hearing until our next meeting on March twenty-eighth. Uh, Mr. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Moving on, under communications, we have none. Select board general items. We have votes at the time for the May third, twenty-twenty-two annual town meeting and for the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two annual town election.
Uh, through the chair, we were recommending once again to hold the annual town meeting at six PM. Uh, we've been receiving feedback from many of the town meeting members who liked that start date. It just meant they were there a little less late on the other end. Uh, and if we do have a lot of articles, it's always good to try to start a little bit earlier. So that was the recommendation for that one.
Is there a motion to set the, uh, annual town meeting for six PM on May third, twenty-twenty-two?
Second.
A roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And then we have the vote for the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two annual town election from eight AM to eight PM. Is there anything to add?
Yes, through the chair, I just wanna hand this out. Uh, it is the last page of the warrant, which it, it was in your packet. Uh, but Sharon pointed out that, uh, she just, first of all, we put it down to a smaller size so this can go in the packet with your warrants. Uh, it's just the copy of the annual election that has to be part of the warrant. And as you can see on that, what's in the warrant right now says eight o'clock AM to eight o'clock PM, because that's from the standard time. So if that did change, this part of the warrant would have to change. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions or comments regarding the timing of the election? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to set the hours of May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two annual town election from eight AM to eight PM.
So moved.
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren? And the chair votes yes. Was that a yes? Um, we have the draft on the May third, twenty-twenty-two annual town meeting warrant. And, uh, votes are transmitted to the two town council.
So through the chair, if I may, so the warrant is, is, uh, in front of you. And I did send an email to all of you, and probably didn't even have a chance to see it because, uh, thankfully, one of the board members asked some questions that we were able to get some information for today on the questions. But one of them was, uh, it was just a, a scrivener's error on Article twenty-seven, which is the Camp Gleason article that we were referring to. I inadvertently, uh, must have deleted the words Camp Gleason, but that is for Camp Gleason. So it will be back in the warrant. So this evening, what we're asking the board to do, and I think most of you have been in this process before, is we're not asking you to take a position on the articles tonight. Uh, but looking at it, these are the articles that have been submitted for the warrant. So if you approve of us sending this law into a town council, town council would then start to do his review for legal form. As you can see, we don't, and we, at this point, don't usually put dollar amounts in some of our articles. So there are some potential, uh, questions for any of the articles because you should still be comfortable with what you have. Just because it's sending to town council doesn't mean you can't ask questions tonight. So we want to make sure that you knew that. And we have, uh, here the department heads who have sponsored articles for this warrant. We asked them to be here tonight. And I also just want to acknowledge, I don't see, I think she was here, but I know our, uh, acting school superintendent Beth Chamberlain is on the call as well to answer any questions on these school articles. I think there were fifteen school articles. So we have Darlene Coyle here, uh, Joanna Paquelin, Deputy Chief Johnson, uh, Seth Willard. And I think that might be it for warrant articles that you have before you. So if you have any questions at all, I know when you're not taking a position tonight, but it would be a great opportunity if you had any questions, we're here to answer them. And if not, if you think of the questions later, my recommendation would be that you put this on the agenda, maybe on March twenty-eighth, to actually start going through each warrant article, because that will give you another two weeks to even take a look at it and see what your questions might be.
Yeah, I'll say that I don't have any questions right now, but I haven't prepared any, and I'm sure I will. Uh, but do any other board members have any questions right now that you want to ask? Seeing none. Um, all right, seeing none, is there a motion to? So do we need to? Yeah, to transmit to town council.
Make a motion to, uh, submit, uh, the warrant, uh, articles to, for review to town council.
Second.
Motion's been made in second by a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, see, we have a vote to transmit proposed zoning bylaw amendments, uh, to amend section three point one nine, three point nine one four of accessory use regulations. To add section fourteen of the Auburn zoning bylaws to the planning board public hearing. Turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you. So this is again, this is another, uh, zoning bylaw amendment that has to, under Mass General Law, has to go for a public hearing to the planning board. Uh, we also transmit it to the, uh, which we've already, it, it is already moving forward to the zoning bylaw review committee. Again, they're, they're advisory, but we really value their opinion. We asked them to look at these, so we'll be going to them as well. And this is a revision of the animal bylaw that went before you, uh, before town meeting in May. And Darlene Coyle and Amy Contois, our animal control officer, have put yeoman's work into this to try to address some of the questions that town meeting members had, revise it and come back with another model. It's really critical that we get an, and bylaw in place for some of the issues that we have in town that we've got to address. Uh, so this is a revision of that and hopefully this time we'll, uh, have some more success moving forward because we've made some changes to it. And I'll take this opportunity to say we're having a pre-town meeting, meeting, uh, pre-town meeting session, I should say, on April nineteenth, it's a Tuesday. And that will be in this room at six PM. And it's for any member of town meeting to come in and ask any questions that they may have on articles before the night of town meeting. So we can go over some of the zoning things, we could go over Camp Gleason. We're happy to go over it again also at town meeting, but it just gives that extra opportunity for people to ask their questions.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yes, just, Ms. Coyle, just, and I know you know this. Um, last go around, I, I watched that town meeting and almost seemed like some jokes were made about this. Um, and I know the work you put into it, and I knew the intent behind this was to stop breeding and illegal breeding and real problems, serious problems that come out of this. Um, so I just hope during those open meetings, whenever I ask you questions, really sell that point that people can have their fish, people can have their chickens. It, I almost got annoyed by it a little bit, that, that people made jokes about it the way that they did. Um, and there's serious problems and the town had a serious problem not a few years back with the breeding. And I know you know all this, so I'm not telling you. Uh, but I think it should be, it's worth being said on open meeting, um, that this, this is a serious issue and, and you've done a lot of work to it, so I appreciate it and I hope that the town realizes all the work that's gone in and the intent behind it, the spirit of this. So that's it.
Thank you so much. Um, we, um, we did listen to town meeting and I, and I do appreciate you bringing that up. Um, I can tell you that our entire department and, um, our animal control officer, Amy Contois, I mean, we have spent hours and hours and hours on this. Um, and really it's, it's to try to, um, solve some of the problems that we deal with on a regular basis in, um, inspectional services. Um, the, uh, the, the reference to fish and, and that sort of thing. Um, we listened to that and we've modified the definition, um, so that it, um, hopefully doesn't distract from the, uh, the main goal. Um, so, uh, we really did try to take, um, the input from town meeting and bring back a, um, a version that, um, hopefully is accepted, um, in a more open way. Thank you.
I'm gonna have to come down and try to find it. Just print it, so we'll bring it up, that's okay.
If there are no other questions or comments, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, um, yes, transmit to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to, uh, amendment, section three point nine point one point four of the accessory use regulations and add section fourteen to the zoning bylaw to the planning board, uh, for a public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Prop forty A.
So moved. Yes, that. I'll second that Scott.
Yeah, that's the last time I read one. Um, by a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Uh, I'm going to ask that we take agenda item, um, G, out of order.
So moved.
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, so, um, at our last meeting, I know not everyone was able to make it. We had voted, um, to support sending this revision of the zoning bylaws to the planning board for review and recommendation, as well as to the zoning board and to set an item on the agenda, uh, or the warrant at town meeting to actually amend our, our zoning bylaws with regards to restricted marijuana dispensaries. Um, since then, uh, I've talked to the town manager about the, the details because one of the things that was included in this bylaw is a removal of the restriction on recreational marijuana. And after discussing the item with town council, it, it's his opinion, um, that we can't strike that um, by simply putting it through the zoning ballot and then going through, uh, town meeting. That would, since it was a, a vote on the ballot by the residents, it would have to be a vote, uh, at the ballot to actually remove it again. So, um, with that and, and that new information coming up, um, my recommendation for moving forward with this would be to continue with the other two major points of this, uh, revision, which would be to, uh, loosen restrictions for medical marijuana dispensaries and, um, remove the moratorium, uh, or the language, the moratorium from zoning bylaws because it's, it's superfluous. Uh, it was basically outdone by the, the ban on recreational, so it doesn't matter anymore. Uh, and continue with that. Um, and then I would also say that, uh, I think we should consider putting the question of eliminating that, that piece and legalizing recreational marijuana dispensaries, uh, on the ballot for, I would say, November, uh, to line it up with the midterms. But, um, with that, I'll, if there are any questions or comments from board members, I, I think that's the direction that, that we may want to go in now with that new information. And I'm sorry, if there's anything you want to add?
No, that was perfect.
I just wanted to talk while you were still searching.
And he, he will be up with that, I apologize, we thought it was in there.
Okay, great. Um, so I don't know if there are any questions or comments from board members. Uh, again, I know some weren't able to make it.
Comment, question, well, first of all, great work on this. It, it was outdated, so, thanks. Well done. Um, and thank you for, for bringing this issue up as well. The loss of tax dollars and fees and excise taxes will never sit well with me on this. Um, clarifying, or question, why do we have, is it solely because it went on ballot?
Yeah, so I can only repeat what, uh, town council has, has told me. But basically, the law that specifies how you ban it is not specific on how to unban it. So he said it, he has to do some more research on what that process would be, but the law was very specific on banning it, uh, that it had to go to a vote of the voters. And he is clear that it would have to go to a vote of the voters to undo what they did because he said that's what you would do for other issues where a voter, if a voter.
I know, I was struggling with it too, yeah.
I'm trying to, it's, I liked it when you said it better. If the voters support something on a ballot, you can't undo it by a bylaw. So his, his basic gist was it went to the voters, the voters actually voted on it at the polls. You can't go through a bylaw and remove what it is they voted to put into the bylaw. So they voted to put into the bylaw the prohibition, you can't remove it by just amending the bylaw. You have to go back to the process that put it there in the first place, which was the initial vote under the law at the time. The law, under that law, doesn't specify which, uh, how you need to go back to undo it. But he believes, as does the clerk, it would likely have to go on a November ballot. Um, and, and I think it would be important to say that even if you wanted to do it on the May ballot, I don't think there's enough time. Uh, I went through today and went through chapter fifty-three, section eighteen B, that the board voted for providing information on a ballot question to the public. And when I backed up from the May seventeenth election date and backed in all the dates and deadlines that we have to meet under that law, you would have had, you would have to take a vote next week. And we would pretty much have to already have identified who the parties are that are gonna write the for, the yes and the no, uh, because otherwise town council has to do it, so we would run out of time.
Okay.
So I think practically speaking, uh, November would be a great time to, to target. And in the meantime, uh, town council said he would do all the research and see the exact process for removing a voter. It, it was not a, it was a binding question, it was not a non-binding referendum, it was a binding question under the law. So there has to be a different process to remove that.
Okay.
Just want to let everyone know that we lost internet for a quick second there, so I just put it back on. So I don't know if, um, Dan might have missed some of what you had said, but it should be back now. back now.
I do agree it's the right way to go. I just didn't know that legally we had to or not, but thank you.
So just point of clarification, so we're proposing that we're gonna put two questions on the ballot for November. One is gonna reverse what we did before entirely, and then the other would be the new proposed question that's gonna specify reducing, first of all, taking away the moratorium, number two, reducing the medical restraints on medical marijuana, and also putting some verbiage in for recreational marijuana. Is that correct?
No, so we would, the question for the ballot would just be to add the recreational portion, so to reverse what we did with the medical dispensaries and removing the moratorium. At least my understanding is we can go forward with that, like we did at the last meeting with the vote going to planning.
That doesn't need to go on.
Right, that doesn't need to go on the ballot. It's just the reversing of...
So there'll be one question on the ballot, right?
Yeah, through the chair, we would have town council verify that. We have to make sure that that's, the board would have some choices to make, because under that law, you can ban it or you can limit it. So if the board is considering any kinds of limitations, that requires a different question. So I guess it all depends on how the board wants to go. If you just want to remove all the bans and have no restrictions on anything, then I believe it's gonna be one question to remove the ban. If you wanted to add any other types of restrictions, like reducing it to be a number less than the 20% of your A B C C licenses, that requires a ballot question. So it all depends on what the board decides as you get closer. And we can get you the timeline for that, you know, backing up to it, but just even looking at today, it's at least, at a bare minimum, you're talking seven weeks before the election, that you have to get everything going. You'd probably really want to get it going about three months in advance, so you can get all that work done on the ballot question. But I, so I don't know until we have town council research it, what we have to put on the ballot. I'm assuming it's one question, but it may be two.
Thank you.
And yes, you can continue, as you said, through the chair, you can continue with this registered marijuana bylaw amendment. In that process, the plan is that this is on the town warrant, the town meeting warrant. It's probably, if you vote tonight, though, you probably want to vote to make a couple of changes to it and then put it back on the warrant. It's already on there as a placeholder, so it's fine. And then we could send it for legal form to town council.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be to vote to remove, from how it's written right now, remove the section that amends 3.7, that's on the third page, and that's the one that would need to go up on the ballot. And then leave the recommendation or the bylaw amendment otherwise the same.
Do you need somebody to make that motion for you?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if I worded it right. All right, so entertain a...
Bring it forward minus 3.7.
Minus 3.7, to continue with the transmitting the zoning bylaw amendments to the zoning board and planning board, planning board for a public hearing with the removal of section 3.7.
Can I just clarify? It would be the zoning bylaw review committee.
Zoning bylaw review.
Yeah, zoning bylaw review, and the planning board for the public hearing. This was already submitted to them from your last meeting's vote, but I think we have to send the revised one now that you're taking out that.
Well, make that motion.
All right, we just lost internet again, so I just want to get Dan back. But by a roll call vote, Mrs. Roughly.
Yes.
Mr. Bretham.
Yes.
Mr. Ren.
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Carpenter.
No.
All right, and the chair votes yes. It's four to one. Then I'll just ask if we can, if possible, get more information for putting it on the ballot in November, shooting for that date.
Yeah, absolutely. Town council said he'd look into it.
Great, thank you.
In here.
Yes, thank you. So the reason I'd asked to move up is I wasn't sure if we had the written policies in the packets when I was going through quickly, and it didn't look like we did. So moving on to agenda item D, this is the supplementary recommendation on tax classification policy. So Scott, I don't know if you want to, I can give the background, so I can pass the buck to you.
So Tristan and I have been meeting for the better part of a year now on the tax classification subcommittee. We went to great lengths to really look to quantify, to really compute an equation on when we think, when it would be best to move on this tax classification and when not to. We thought we had some things in place. Ed aptly pointed out our, some of the things we just couldn't quantify, we couldn't, there was too many factors, we couldn't account for everything, and there was no one equation which we came to realize that would actually work. We would have had a lot of unintended consequences, and frankly, based on the makeup of the board, we weren't convinced that we could get you guys all to agree on it either. Fast forward to the last vote, I think that Tristan and I had differences of opinion on that, and we really kind of realized at that point that we really should go with something more generalized. So that's really what you guys have before you today, which really, it's more of a statement of intent, more than anything. I just don't think that there is any one equation, based on there's so many different factors, whether it be house values, you know, I could go down the list. Seth helped us with this as well, Seth Willard, but we think it's best to just go with this, and we wanted to see what your guys' feedback was.
Right, yeah, the original, I know when we had our, at our last tax classification hearing, I had referenced it, even though it wasn't a policy, it was just something we were talking about at the time, you know, we were looking at, okay, what would the standard deviation be for tax increases on the median household for any given year, and then trying to limit the impact of the median tax bill. And we had something drawn up, if we had used that policy at the time, we wouldn't have moved on the tax rate at our last meeting, and that's when we started to talk about whether or not that was too restrictive on the board. So we did meet again and talk about this more general policy, like Scott said, that we think would help the board, one, send the message to the business community that we're committed to moving towards that single rate, make a plan to try to move towards the single rate as we retire the debt, which is something that we've talked about before, and we talked about it at the last meeting, while also, in the second paragraph, including our commitment to trying to find ways to help the seniors in Auburn, and any way possible to update our own policies as Mass. general law is updated. Because at our last meeting, I think it was Bretham, you had served on the subcommittee that looked at where we could improve, and we moved everything to the max that it was allowed under Mass. general law per your recommendations, and it just really wouldn't be too much of a help. Unfortunately, we're limited by Massachusetts law, so we wanted to include a regulation for the board or a commitment to meet annually to add that part to our classification hearing, to say, okay, has it been updated? If so, let's jump on that and help residents. I just wanted to mention why we included that second paragraph, but are there any other questions right now from board members?
And just through the chair, the business community had often each year, they come before us and they tell us, the board had committed to getting to a single tax rate, and then they're often reminded that it was just set in an open meeting. We felt this was more meaningful, and I know that this could, as the board changes and as it's constituted differently, that maybe the overall majority position may change. So this would have to be looked at from every few years, we'd have to certainly have another subcommittee review this and see where things are, but I think the message needs to be sent that we are committed to a single tax rate, and that I think the majority here does believe in that, you know, working with the business community will ultimately be the pathway to get to a lower tax rate for our residents. So that's what we're saying here. And again, we did, I would hope that this would, I'll certainly be relying on it as long as I'm on the board when we do retire that debt, that we're saying right here, we're looking to make a meaningful move here upon the retirement of that, of the Auburn High School debt.
When is the high school debt retired?
Fiscally, year 2024. So we're not that far away.
No.
And right now, we're raising about 1.1 million outside of the levy to carry that debt. So that's gonna have a positive impact on a reduction of taxation, you know, raising that, provided that no other facilities are being requested, that may absorb a portion of that debt. And so I think as the chair and Scott have indicated, those are opportunities I think we want to try to take advantage of and make a movement towards the gap in taxation, so. And that's what makes this whole thing complex. And I know the chair and Scott put a lot of work into this, and I thank you, and so did Seth, we met a few times, and there were some creative ideas, but we want to offer a policy that offers the town some flexibility to kind of think outside of the box and do some creative things, so. And I think this is a good policy, and I think it sends a strong message to the business community that this town is committed to getting there at some point in time. All due respect, means nothing. I mean, until you make a move, it means nothing. So I fought for this for six years, I won't be at the next tax classification hearing. I appreciate the effort that you guys put in. You know, the debt's gonna be, of the high school will be over in fiscal year 2024. I'm sure we'll be well on our way to talking about a public facility at that point, so, you know, I'm not excited about this, and I'll be cautiously optimistic that we can make a move, but, you know, until the board actually makes a move, it's just, you know, it's like our government down at Washington is just talk, that's all it is. Thank you.
Through the chair, I agree, especially last year when people's values went up and that was an argument not to raise or not to move. Wait till you see what happens when people's values go down, what happens to the economy, and you'll never move on a tax rate in that economy. And so, at what, when do we move? If we couldn't move last year, I don't see how the board could move, but this was the best we could do. We, I had to learn about standard deviations and the mathematical equation on how to do that.
I made them learn about it for nothing.
But I do, I do take your point, I do.
I think that putting this policy in place, and like it's been pointed out, if we have three members, it only takes three members to remove the policy, but it does give the business community something in writing to actually say, instead of saying, you know, oh, 10 years ago, there was a commitment, when, 10 years ago, the board, that was completely different, said that we wanted to do that, and that wasn't, that wasn't a very strong commitment. I think this is definitely a stronger statement that that's the direction we want to move in, and it ties the board to something. I also think that it has an actual plan. You know, we're looking at 2024, and who knows what the board will look like in 2024, but it does lay out a plan for getting to that single rate. So I'm hoping that it works and that we can move in that direction. I also want to take the time to thank Seth, who actually emailed, I don't know if you just emailed it directly to me today or to the whole board, but a way to actually sign up to get automatic responses from... Right, so if you notice anything, so yeah, so thanks for sending that along today, and thank you again for meeting with us and all the work that you put into this, also sending us every bit of data that we asked for. I appreciate that. So that's all I have on it. I don't know if there's any, yep?
I just, I don't know, does Mr. Carpenter want that to be read? So I know, if we're gonna take a vote on it, he might want to hear what it actually says here.
I actually have another question. In the event the voters do choose to do a public safety facility, does this policy bind us to lowering or to a single tax rate? Not that I don't think it's important for the businesses, but if it's a voter choice to incur more debt with a public safety facility, are we obligated to go towards a single tax rate? Okay.
Mr. Carpenter, it sounds like I'm typing it out to you, but may I take a second? I don't know if you had something that you wanted to say in the meantime.
My general feeling on this is the board, those who serve with me, which is two of you for the long, I do not share your passion for a single tax rate. My suggestion, rather than adopting a policy, is to put a ballot question to the voters and ask them what it is if they support a single tax rate. I think five members of the community shouldn't be necessarily making the decision one way or the other. Yes, Mass. general law gives the voter selectmen that authority, and, but I would feel far more publicized, we went to the ballot and asked the voters directly, what is, what are their priorities? Is their priority the same as the majority of the voter selectmen at this point in time? That could be yes, that could be no.
Yep, Mr. Bretham.
To that point, that would be, I believe, totally unfair to the businesses. I think that, you know, you have, the voters are out there, and of course, every voter is a, probably, or affiliated with a homeownership, and they want their taxes to be, you know, as low as possible, and so to put something on the ballot that just says, do you want to go to a single tax rate, as opposed to like move into a single tax rate, or however we want to word it, I think it would be very difficult to be fair to the businesses to just put it out there. I think at some point, you know, if the board feels that they have a good calculation on going to a single tax rate, and they want to, you know, show that and then put it on the ballot, that's fine, but just to put a question on the ballot to say, do you want to go to a single tax rate or not? You know, there's, I don't think there's enough education out there right now to make it fair to the businesses.
Through the chair, Mr. Carpenter, much like the naming of the town buildings, Mass. general law has given us this, or give us this obligation to take these votes, that's the weight of the seat that we're in. So sometimes tough decisions have to be made on these matters, so I don't think we need to put everything to the voters, the voters voted us in here to make those decisions.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Ren. What I'm saying is, whether Mass. general law gives us the authority, doesn't mean that we, as the elected officials, should exercise that authority without going to the voters. You know, I go door to door every time I run for election, and I do that for the sole purpose of introducing myself as well as listening to the resident. And while we don't get a lot of residents to that classification hearing for whatever reason, there are strong positions. And I think I would prefer myself, and whether the board wants to do it or they don't, is up to each individual member, but I think it's, this question is of such importance that I think, I feel it's incumbent upon me to at least suggest that we go to them with a ballot question, however that question is. We know how the business community feels about the tax rate, they get to box... They get to talk to us every year and they can talk to us in between. There's no, there's nothing to prevent them from sending out a mailer, expressing their opinion one way or the other. And I'm quite confident the chamber would do so. They do have an, they do have a, a column in the TNG in which they can send their interests out into the communities where it's review and, and, you know, comment. So I would be far more comfortable going to the voters and, you know, it's up to the board what they would like to do. But that's, that's my five cents.
Sure. Now you tell me. Okay. Yeah.
I just saw the policy to send.
Yeah. Yeah. So Dan, I don't know if you saw, I did just type it out minus a few typos and probably some spelling errors. That's more or less what, how the policy reads, um, in the chat.
Complete discussion to Mr. Carpenter's point. I know it seems hypocritical because I was in favor of the spending town dollars to, to inform the, the public. But I really do feel that while it may seem like a disagreement, no one's saying business community over residents. We're talking about how do we get the residents' taxes lower? We just disagree in how we get there. So I think that is to, to Mr. Bertheum's point, it's a nuanced point that I don't even know that we could accomplish through mailings and, and, and letting people know. I mean, the snap, the, the five seconds of attention you get, you're, do I want lower taxes or not? That's a tough one. So, um, all good points by everybody.
And one more, I just have a comment. So if this policy doesn't obligate the board to do anything, is there a need for it? Other than we're telling the business community that we're wanting to get to a single tax rate?
I think what the policy does, sorry, is it also lays out the plan. And that seems to be getting glossed over is using the, um, way that would, when we retire the debt, right? We're hoping that we can move to a single rate while causing as little pain and suffering on the residents, especially those on fixed incomes, as possible. That was the goal of our subcommittee, uh, or one of the things that we were considering. You know, how, how would we do this without causing too much pain on the taxpayers? And that's why our initial plan and equation had, okay, if we went the other way, here are the limitations on it too. So if we expand it and maybe, um, uh, a split rate even wider, uh, for whatever reason, if the future board decided to go in the other direction. Then we had limitations as to how much it could impact the business community in any given year. This policy is a little bit different in that it's, it's really only going in one direction. But it does lay out that plan of, okay, here's where we're going to find a way so that the residents aren't feeling the, the real pain of doing it. So don't know if that helps answer the question at all.
Yeah, I just, um, I just think that in the event that there is a public safety facility created, that it makes it harder to continue on like with that we promise we will lower the business tax rate. Can I answer that?
Sure.
I didn't read anything in there that it was a promise. It's a goal. That's, that's all it is. It's a goal. And, um, that's why, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic because it's, it, we're not, we're not saying we're gonna, you know, decrease, uh, the, the distance between the two rates, uh, next year, the year after. Where the goal is that when the high school debt gets paid off, that hopefully there's, there's going to be some sort of a, um, a, a gap that, that can, you know, the way that we can close that gap. But, um, you know, the way, the way it's written is, is perfect because it's not, it's not committing to anything. It's, it's, uh, basically establishing a goal. It's a goal that I think was established in the past. It, it was, you know, it, it's basically, again, it's all good intentions, but, um, there's, it doesn't say anything other than, uh, it's a new commitment and I appreciate that. It's a new commitment, uh, for the board to, uh, or part of the board to, to work toward, um, toward this, this goal that, you know, many other communities have, have found a success in doing. So, um, it, you know, it, it makes everybody feel, uh, when you get to a single tax rate. To me, it's, it's, it's finding that, that, um, smooth area where, uh, everyone seems to be taking ownership, uh, for the town, the businesses and the, and the residents. And, um, until we get to that, uh, I think this is the best you can do and, and I appreciate your effort on it.
Is there anything else from any other board members? Kind of administration would have added anything? With that, um, I don't know how this is going to go. I'll entertain a motion to adopt, uh, the policy as written.
I'll make the motion to adopt it as written.
And just to, actually, I should have said this in the, to, uh, as the, the first line is the select board as it is presented, constituted as of, um, March 14th, 2022. So, uh, motion has been made by Mr. Bertheum. Is there a second?
Second.
By a roll call vote, this is roughly.
Discussion, roll call, sure, sorry. Could, would you be able to amend yours, uh, instead of meaning move, I think it should be meaningful move?
Would you amend your motion to include that edit as well?
Uh, where are we looking at?
Oh, last sentence of the first.
Last sentence of the first, yeah. The board shall seek to make a meaningful move.
Sure, I'll amend that.
Mr. Carpenter, you'll notice that I corrected that while I was typing it out to you, but so yours already reads that way. Okay. So as amended, um, so I'll just read it out. The select board, as it is present, as it presently constituted, geez, okay, maybe I shouldn't do this. As of March 14th, 2022, hereby adopts the following policy in regard to tax classification. The board shall seek to move towards a single rate in a responsible manner so as to not cause sharp increases to the average residential property tax bill. Further, upon retirement of the Auburn High School debt exclusion, the board shall seek to make a meaningful move towards a single tax rate without increasing the average tax bill as a result of moving on the rate only. Further, the select board in recognition of the financial burden of regular tax increases and in continued effort to mitigate the, these effects on residents dependent on fixed incomes, resolved to meet annually in November with the town assessor for the purpose of reviewing all tax relief policies currently adopted by the town of Auburn. The aforementioned meeting will include a report from the town assessor on all such policies as well as any recent and relevant alterations adopted by the General Court of the Commonwealth that would allow for the alterations to town policies. Motion was made by Mr. Bertheum and seconded by Mr. Ren and by a roll call vote, this is roughly.
No.
Mr. Bertheum.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
No.
Mr. Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It passes three to two. Moving on, under gift acceptances, we have none. Proclamation and recognitions, we have none. Under town manager items, we have the ARCA fundraising requests that we talked about under the opening, opening hearing. So if there's nothing else.
Okay.
Okay. Table items, we have none. All right. So, um, this is discussion and potential vote to establish a committee for the purpose of adopting a town flag. This was, uh, something I asked to add. So I've mentioned it a couple of meetings now. Uh, I've met with a member of the Auburn Historical Society as well as a graphics design teacher at Auburn High with the idea of coming up with a competition to solicit input from residents and from students of high school and really anyone that is an Auburn resident that wants to submit a design to adopt an official town flag. Right now we have, um, the blue one, I know that people have seen it before, it has the outline of town hall. Julie, you sent me the email of it today. And that's one flag that's been tossed around. The Auburn Historical Society has a red one, uh, that they've designed that's, uh, just in their building. And then there's one, uh, that's actually at the state house that I talked to Rick Frost about. That's just a white background with the town seal placed on it. But as far as I know, and sorry has found, we haven't adopted an official town flag. So we thought that this would be a good way to involve the community in something that's just a fun activity to adopt a town flag. Something that signifies Auburn. So right now where we're at, we've come up with a list of, uh, historical events and things that are significant to Auburn. And we're thinking that we would start with, uh, within the next few weeks or so, announcing that this competition would be going forward and inviting everyone to submit designs, either sketches of their designs on pieces of paper or actual digital designs to an email. Uh, and then the graphics design department at Auburn High, uh, has offered to take some of those sketches and then put them so that they'd actually be, you know, in, on the computers of graphic design. That can be viewed a lot more easily and, uh, actually placed on a flag. So a resident doesn't have access to a computer, they're, they just really good at sketching, they can do it that way. And we're thinking that we would have a vote by, uh, just a Google poll, something like that. With QR codes linking people to that vote. And we would target, uh, July 4th, or I think it's the last day in June. When we have the actual Fourth of July celebration for the town planned. And that was sorry's idea of, you know, we're celebrating the Fourth of July, the country's flag. Here's a good way to vote on, on a town flag. So our idea would be to have this committee that we establish, look at all the submissions, review the submissions, narrow it down to five or six or so. Uh, and then have those be voted on in that week of, of the Fourth of July, uh, for one final design to be adopted and then brought back to the board for, for natural adoption. Right now I would just ask that the board consider, and if they would tonight, vote to establish the committee or start taking in applications for people to serve on the committee. I would think, and this is something that we, we've talked about as how would constitute the, the committee? One member of the board of selectmen, one member of the historical society, uh, two members of just the general public, anyone that's interested, wants to serve on it. And then one to two members from, uh, an art or graphic design background, uh, who might be able to jettison a little bit more, uh, a little bit more expertise on, uh, the flag designs. So, um, that's got, I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about it right now.
Yep. Uh, will, will the school get involved, the school system?
Yep. So with, uh, the graphic design department, we'd hopefully encourage them and it's one of the teachers is, is looking at doing this as well. And he was actually, I had to ask if he would serve or apply to be one of the members of the committee. And he's a little hesitant because he imagines he's going to be helping students submit their designs. Cause he's going to be, you know, head heavily encouraging students to submit it because it'll look great on a portfolio, you know, if you get yours adopted by the town. So he may not, uh, but yeah, the school would absolutely be involved, uh, in that way. And we can definitely advertise, uh, I, my goal with this committee, once it's, it's up, would be, you know, they're in charge of really heavily advertising the event, going out to social media. And, and, uh, through Auburn, they have.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carpenter.
Through you to the town manager. At, at one point, the economic development committee was looking at a town flag. I, I have no idea where they are on that, if that's even, if the committee is even working currently on anything. But that might be something to look into.
Through the chair, I'll definitely follow up to see where the committee is on that. We also, and I had sent it to the chair, uh, we did have a grant for a wayfinding program. And through the wayfinding program, we came up with a logo and a design that we, that this board voted on, uh, to move forward on, uh, banners and other signage, wayfinding signs, things like that. So that might be a possibility as well. And I know that had also gone through the economic development committee. And I think, Mr. Carpenter, you were actually on that wayfinding committee along with Kenny Thier from the Historic Commission. So, uh, that is another possibility is to use the wayfinding that's already been designed and had some public input. And then we can check and see if the economic development committee was looking at something different from that. But I know they were supportive of the wayfinding design that was come out.
Yeah, I should clarify. So one of the, uh, ways that we were planning to advertise it is to have a, a basically pamphlet or online, um, a list of sources to draw inspiration from. There are several videos from artists, uh, talking about how to design a, a town flag. So we were thinking of linking those as well as putting in that list of historical events in Auburn, uh, items of significance. And we can definitely include the, um, the banner designs and, uh, signpost designs from the, with any committee. Just to include that as another source of inspiration.
I'll make a motion to, uh, vote to establish a committee for the purpose of adopting a town flag.
Would you mind, uh, amending it to include just so that it would consist of one board of selectmen member, one member of the historical society, two members with, uh, background in art or graphic design and two members of the general public?
Second.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, one quick question. How many members do you have total now?
Six. Yeah, so it would have to be an odd number. You're right. I'll vote, um, one member with a graphic or art design background and then, uh, so that would be five. Thanks. Uh, by a roll call vote, Mr. Broccoli. Mr. Bertheum.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter.
No.
Mr. Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Four to one. With that, we don't have the minutes from the last meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
A roll call vote, Mrs. Broccoli.
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Good night.